All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene is absent. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn to executive session. I need a motion.
Make a motion, will you adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we'll come back to adjourn from executive session. Okay, before we begin the work session, we just need to adjourn from executive session. I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
And a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. The time is now 4:59, we are going to start the work session with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. I would like to begin just by taking an opportunity for everybody to go around the table, introduce themselves, their role, and maybe just a little bit about themselves so we can keep it, you know, nice and brief. For example, my name is Tara Walter, I'm the mayor of Florence, Arizona. I served as vice mayor and council since 2012.
I'm Kristin Larson, I joined council on this last election, so I'm only in two years now.
And I'm Karen Wall, I've met all of you and thank you for coming.
Bill Hawkins, and this is my second go around on the council. That's about it.
Hi. Rodney Mendoza, I've been on the chamber for, I think this is going on my third year. I've served as a vice chair and chair and now as a at-large member on the executive board.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Smith, I currently sit as treasurer and I've been with the chamber a little over a year now.
Yeah, push, push the...
Press hard.
And then it's still late, there you go. That's still late, give it a second.
Well, I'm pretty loud anyway, I'm Brenda Hewitt, I'm the administrator of the chamber. I've been there for about two years now.
I'm loud too, I'm Candy Rogers, I'm new probably to the chamber board. I work at the Windmill Winery, I'm our special events director and I've been on the Chamber, Florence Chamber Board for two months, three months, brand new.
I'm Wendy Yu, board chair this year, I have been on the board for about, I'm going on three years, I believe, so kinda have a good idea of what's been going on.
Gary Power, I'm owner of your local motor vehicle division, provide the services for you. I'm the vice chair, I've been the vice chair for two years now, this is going on my third year as well.
Just go all the way down, Ms. Garcia.
Brent Billingsley, town manager.
Jennifer Evans, management analyst and staff liaison to the chamber.
Clifford Matice, the town attorney.
John Anderson, I'm on town council, I've been here for three years, hoping to make it more.
I'm Becky Gleene, I've been on council three years also, this is my first and final run, so I won't be here again.
I'm Valerie Woolridge, I'm currently the vice mayor and I've been on council 14 years. Welcome. Hopefully we can make some progress tonight.
All right, so thank you for taking a few minutes for introductions. So we, we have just some questions, do you have access to those questions as well? Okay.
Questions?
Excellent. All right, so in going around for the work session, as a partner, the Florence Chamber of Commerce can play a pivotal role in promoting Florence as a great place to live and own a business. I'm just kinda going off this for the public information as well. The chamber can also provide much-needed assistance with business retention activities related to education, business promotion, and community promotion of business and retention are two of the basic yet very important services that the chamber provides the community. We have some outstanding businesses in the town of Florence. Our goal is we want to bring in additional businesses and really work on economic development within our town. You play a crucial role in that and we want to take this opportunity to sort of have a better understanding of where you're coming from as a chamber, as well as you to gain some understanding of where we're coming from as a council and how we can best work together. Okay. So, I was reflecting on, you know, did you want one spokesperson to answer? I thought it would be beneficial to almost have each of you take an opportunity to speak and give your perspective because there might even be diversity amongst, you know, yourselves. So what does the chamber consider its primary role in the community?
What I wrote down here, after thinking about it quite a bit and knowing that we need to bring business in, so to promote interest in local business and the town's attractions, this takes money, planning, inspiration, and guidance, yet it depends on members working vigorously on communities together, or committees together of their choice. So, members need to be encouraged to become involved and that's where we would need to start, is encourage to get members, to get members involved to accomplish that.
Okay. Now you mentioned members involved, what is, just for our, our understanding, what is our membership of the Florence Chamber? How many businesses in town do we have?
We have approximately 136 members currently. We have approximately 136 members at this time.
How many of those are local-based members?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
The majority.
Okay. And does anybody else want to add on to what Gary Powers had stated?
Well, I think the primary role, what we're trying to accomplish is great communication with their businesses and what the chamber can offer them as far as networking with other businesses, trying to get the word out, who they are, what, what type of business they have, and that the businesses, once they become members, they can actually network with each other and refer off of each other for more businesses because the business owners are looking for opportunities for their businesses to grow. And why should they join the chamber? Because we can help them provide that by providing networking, community events, where everybody can come together, like our casino night that we have, the car show that we recently had was a big, was one of our bigger ones too, and casino is every, all the time, and we're doing more that, for that. So we can give the businesses an opportunity to get out of their businesses, to meet with other business people, and at the same time, as board members, we can hear what their concerns are, and that's really important, that's where the communication comes in. Because I think if the, if the community can see us, meet us, be with us, and we can hear what they want, then we can in turn try to develop community events towards that, try to develop networking towards that, and I think we've been doing some of those things with our breakfast meetings, with our luncheons, with our educational things, and the best plan has not yet been developed, as you know that. And so we think that through the strategic planning, we can gain more of a, more input, and we can solicit the input and then incorporate the input so they know we're listening to them and get something done. The businesses want to survive down here, they want to be able to make, make a living, make a decent living and survive. And so by joining the chamber, we'll do everything we can to enhance their opportunities to grow their businesses. And so that, most of the reasons why we're here tonight is, is to listen to the council again, to get your input to how we can better serve the community. And I think one of the best ways is through the strategic planning. I really think we can gain a lot of insight from an outsider who knows strategic planning and how to teach others, that we can gain a lot from that and we can enhance our chamber for our members for that.
Excellent. I like that.
I'll just add a couple things to it. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now can you? Okay. I've never not been too loud. I agree with everything that the board members have said, I just want to add in that I believe that we, as a chamber, also need to make the community attractive for growth, we need to attract and retain members, and we need to create revenue. We need to provide and add value through what we're doing for them. So for me, living in, I've been an event planner and done events for over 20 years, yes, events are great, community events are fun, but I think as a chamber, we need to add value to what they're getting as a chamber member, and that is gonna include classes, trainings, and provide them resources that they wouldn't normally have access to. And I also think that working within that and also working with our local government to develop pro-business initiatives that will make community growth as a whole. So, I think again, the communication, to just be a catalyst to develop those strong local networks for our business community, and I think getting back to grassroots, for me, is the most important as a chamber, that we need to get back to what we stand for using our community documents and really adhering to those and going back to our grassroots of that, really a chamber is a business network and that's what we're here to do, is to grow our businesses.
That was very well said, and you really hit the nail when you referenced the pro-business initiatives, that's something that our council and our staff has been actively pursuing and implementing, and that's why you see some of the partnerships coming aboard. So any additional ideas in that area are always appreciated. So, you mentioned briefly some of the services that the chamber does provide, which is number two, that we're gonna be talking about. So is there anything other than, you know, the classes and the trainings, and do you want to list any specific resources that it provides for its members in the community? Because I did see Mark in the audience, I know he's definitely gonna give you guys some amazing coverage in the paper, so any business that's not a part of it will also have an opportunity to know what y'all offer.
As of right now, there is a calendar that we do have, and it is passed out at every mixer, we try to make it available at every breakfast, every luncheon. We've tried the every other month, so we've had a, we've heard a demand for the breakfast, the breakfast in the morning, of course, so we've decided to go with, in every other month. One month we do a breakfast, the following month we do a lunch. The lunches are lunch and learn, breakfast is a networking. Lunch is also a networking, but they do bring in someone, I believe the last lunch and learn we had was an individual that came in and spoke about estate planning. I know in the past Linda Too Good has talked about tax preparation, so those are the things that we focus on, we use our local business owners to come in and teach what it is they do on a daily basis, because not all of us know or have the knowledge of these, of our businesses. The other is the monthly mixer, that does happen every month at a different location. Every business has the opportunity to volunteer and sponsor the mixer, you can, and the mixer is held at their location. As our, one of our most local one I can recall is, Mr. Power had it at his location, we've done it at the credit union, so it gets our members out there to see what, number one, what everybody's business looks like, number two, you get to interact with the owner and also other business members. There's also ribbon cuttings, so the new businesses that come aboard, from, also grand openings, they, we offer the ribbon cuttings, directory listings, referrals. It's really nice when you call in and, I need a glass person, that's the best thing I can think of right now, I need somebody who does glass. Me personally, as a member and part of the community, I try to use our members, if they're not there, then I go local, but the first thing I do is membership. So, you can call down to the chamber and they will offer you that, or you can go to the website. So those are some of the events. The major events that we have right now is the car show, which will be happening every February. This year was our first year, very successful, I, I'm very proud of that event and our hard work that everybody put into it. Casino night this year will be the 18th, 18th year that Casino Night is held. Last year, I don't know, any of you attended, I don't recall any faces, but it was very successful, and I mean, just to see all, everybody that got involved to make it happen, it was, it was good. What we did also try last year was the cornhole tournament, which, that is going to become an annual event and that happens during Junior Parada, so that's a way for the local community events along with the chamber to get involved, to work together. That was, it was really nice to see the parade go down and see our community, business owners get together and partake in the cornhole tournament. There's, there's gotta be a lot more and I just can't think of it right now. So that's, that's how we kinda get the members and the community together, is providing these events, but then also our monthly, monthly events as well. And everybody is welcome, you don't have to be a member, but if there is a fee, it's a little bit more, so.
What is the chamber's website? I don't think that I've actually visited it yet, I didn't know about it.
It's FlorenceAZChamber.com.
Okay. Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, our guests today, welcome. Three things that I took away from, from the interest and the discussion there that certainly are items that are opportunities to succeed from a staff perspective, and certainly opportunities for us to enhance our community, our number one cooperation in events. I as well was very excited about the partnership and the result of the car show. I think that's a stellar example that could be provided of the chamber and the town working together towards an event, and I know that we're, we're proud of the effort that the chamber put in and the result as well. Secondarily, and Ms. Yu pointed this out, there's a real opportunity for the town and for the chamber to work together regarding business training. What's it like to start a new business? What's a business plan and how do you formulate one? What are the different types of funding that exist out there? What are the different types, types of tax breaks and the type of reporting based on different types of businesses? How do you go through the process with the Arizona Corporation Commission of establishing a corporation? These are the types of things that I believe the town and the chamber can work on in terms of an education problem, program. And then lastly, something that I've made a goal since day one that, I'm looking at Jen, because Jen and I have been formulating on this for a while, and that is a business retention program. The chamber could do a business retention program, the town could do a business retention program, but I think it would be a lot more impactful if the chamber and the town worked together to provide a business retention program. So, and that program can not only be retention, it can be expansion as well, to provide those resources. So those are three things that I picked out that are opportunities to succeed.
And another partner we can bring to the table with the small business and growth and development, through CAC, they also have some training that's available for you, I believe it's free of charge, last I checked. And we have an amazing facility that we'd love to have you guys have some classes in over here at the community center. All right, any members of council wanna add anything before I go to the next one?
Well, there's one concern I had, you know, I'm pleased to hear what your successes have been, I think you need to better publicize them. You know, it would be nice to know, you know, the car show, how many people did that bring into town, how much more money did that generate for us? What are these events, what are these events doing for the town? You know, we hear about the events, but we never hear the results of the events, was it worthwhile to have a car show? We had, you know, 200 people, 300 people in town, and they...
Fact. I don't have an exact number for you, but I know that there are photos that show from the light, or was it the light?
Yeah.
From the, from...
The way down.
Butte, down to Ruggles.
I've seen those.
Our streets were full, and they were full of cars. We had at least over 100...
Five?
111, 111. It was 111 entries, so just in cars, you've got 111 drivers multiplied by two, because a lot of them came in with their spouses, a lot of brought in family, ourselves, our local people, it was kinda hard to avoid. So, as an exact number...
Oh, I don't, I don't think...
I had to throw a number out there, I would say at, at minimum, 500 to 700 people.
It was on the website.
Is it on the website? Okay, thank you. All the information, the results were on the website.
I like that it was all over Facebook.
Yes, it was.
I saw the pictures on Facebook, so I, you know, I'm aware of your successes, I just think you need to publicize them more. We have the same problem in our town, in our council, and all our businesses in town. You know, I live out in Anthem and the people don't know that downtown exists, you know, half the time when we talk about the car show, nobody knew anything about it. I won't say nobody, you know, a lot of people knew about it, but, but we somehow, we don't get the word out. And, you know, how can the chamber help us do that?
Yes, Wendy.
Just in regards to the comment about Anthem, Anthem is one of the hardest communities, not only in our east valley here, but in general, to publicize it. Anthem, the bottom line is, they want it paid, and they will not publicize unless we pay them to publicize. So, we, as a chamber, and we as a local community, need to use our folks that live in Anthem to be our advocates to get the word out. So, I think through flyers and bare minimum basics, again, going back to grassroots of how we communicate, if we can get the word out through our folks that live in Anthem to pass the word to their neighbors, that's going to drive our friends and family that live in Anthem to come here.
They...
Well, I agree with that.
It's expensive, it's expensive to advertise through their, the channels that they want, and it could get upwards of the thousands of dollars for basics.
Yeah, well, one of the things I'm always trying to promote with Brian back here, is to get more signs out. We can put signs on town property.
Okay.
I actually contacted someone, I did contact someone over there because they told us that we weren't giving you guys the information, and again, a block wall, I couldn't get it there.
Well, I'm saying, put it on town property, not on Anthem property. So you can put it out on Hunt Highway, for example?
Do you remember...
I mean, we kinda have to decide, us sending someone out to put it on Hunt Highway, if that's gonna benefit us or not, I mean, a sticker on a telephone pole, I don't know...
No, it has to be...
You know what I'm saying? And we don't have big signage yet for some of our events, because they're new events.
Yeah.
Who did you speak with at Anthem to get the information out?
I contacted, well, I have, a lot of my clients are out there, so I'll get to talking to them, you know, I've contacted the golf course, asked them, can't put anything there, can't put anything at the grill, I can't put anything in the clubhouse, I mean, all of my veins of access to communicating are shut down.
I wish I knew, I want to put you in contact with Sharon, Sharon's the community manager up there.
Yeah.
Really?
She will not do it unless we pay them. That's the bottom line, and that's their policy as a, as the community, as the managing agent of the community.
As the managing agent of the community, that's what they have to follow, so it's not, yes, Sharon would love to do it for us, I know her personally, so yes, she'd love to put flyers and do it as a favor, but she has regulations she has to follow as the manager of that community. So it's the same thing, it's, it's a block wall. So that's why I'm saying we need to, if, if I had a list of everyone that lived in Anthem, I'd give everybody stacks of flyers and say, hey, go put these out at your neighbors.
I know there's quite a few Facebook groups that are very active in Anthem, even creating the event online and on Facebook and having an actual event, so that they can share it over and over again, I think that might be an avenue, obviously they can't stop that, and there is different portals there that people, everybody has access to.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, we've had people who do jewelry making or whatever, and they, the arts in the park, they were very upset that we weren't advertising the arts in the park. So I just called down and said to Brenda, hey, let's put it on, but then when you try to do that, they have rules and regulations. So we're kind of in a, it's a dance, and it's not a good dance. We don't know exactly how to infiltrate and get in there, because I have people call me all the time and tell me, well, we don't know anything about what you're doing. All I can tell them is go to our website, because we can't go in there. So, if somebody can tell us how to get in there, and it's a good way, good gate of access, we will do it.
Join Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Connection, it's, it's a, it's an online Facebook... You have to be a resident, but we know the administrators and we'll approve you.
Let me ask Brenda a question. With our influence with Pulte, can we say these are town functions and town civic groups and they need to be a little more lenient with us?
We can certainly have that conversation, I can't guarantee results, but we're in a position now with some of the negotiations that we're doing that perhaps we can make some headway there, yes.
Thank you.
And if we did want to, you know, one sign as well, it'd probably be best served as you go outside on Hunt Highway where the Safeway Plaza is, and if you just angle it right there, that's a public right of way, they could put a sign out for an event, if you could inform us of that code, because I don't know it off the top of my head.
I'm going to, I'm looking right now at Chris Solis's head over the chair here, and when we make that headway, we're gonna make that a agenda item at our next, next meeting with Pulte, and if in fact we do make some headway there, I'll put it on Public Works to determine a location that's safe. The other thing, while I'm looking at Chris, and Wendy, this goes out to you, I am volunteering Chris Solis to come to one of your upcoming meetings, either a breakfast or evening mixer, to talk to the businesses about the building safety process, concerned with the codes and how to deal with historic buildings, those types of things, and to kinda help folks to understand what the requirements are of especially purchasing one of these historic buildings and bringing them up to code so that they could be utilized by businesses, because I know that's a frequent question and controversy, so I'm volunteering Chris to do that.
So, just might I ask that we hold off on that until the winter months? Because right now, we can't, it's hard to get people to attend the, the mixers, because it's, we're seasonal and there's nothing we can do about that.
Anytime you want, you book him whenever you want.
Let's do it when we're gonna get somebody there to listen to it.
Along the lines of the advertising, I think this is one of the reasons that we need to meet like this, because every time we do a major event, casino night, the car show, et cetera, fortunately, we partner with the town, and that makes a tremendous difference, because otherwise, we wouldn't have the help, the manpower, the finances to do a lot of these events that we do put on for the town. With that said, possibility of approaching Anthem, that the advertising coming from the town, partnership with the chamber, maybe they could give us better rates, maybe they could come up with something just for us, because we're, we're not just a flea market coming in and asking if we can advertise, we're just not, here's a garage sale, we want you to advertise, but we're actually legit, that we're partnering with the town on this special... that we're partnering with the town on this special function and it's, and it is something. And it's something big that they probably want to take part of.
We'll ask that question. Absolutely.
Well, how many businesses out there, or do you know roughly at Anthem, how many businesses are Chamber members?
In Anthem?
In Anthem, I don't think any.
We have Valentinos.
Oh, yeah.
Valentinos. Safeway's not a member? Well, I would think Valentinos could put in posters or whatever, but I mean, I'm amazed, Safeway's not a member, huh?
No.
Valentinos has advertised.
Yeah.
Okay, well, no, no, but I was just, I was just wondering. I mean, I'm kind of shocked that there's only one member out there. That's amazing.
I'm not really sure what Safeway's corporate policy is, but I know that there are some businesses that are corporate and they will not do memberships. Autozone is a great example. I have tried and tried and tried. They will not because corporate does not allow it. So it may be one of those situations where as far as corporate, they may not allow that.
Well, I'm just, I mean, like I say, I'm kind of stunned that they wouldn't. I mean, the Chamber's not an entity that's out there promoting just one agenda. I mean, they're there for the community.
Absolutely.
For the betterment of the business community. So that's just amazing. I mean, I didn't know that. I mean, I'm kind of shocked.
They do help us out with donating stuff, but they won't join. The corporate.
That just boggles me. I don't see where there's a controversy, I mean, promoting events for the Chamber.
Like Wendy said, it might just be their corporate policies. It's not that they don't want to interact, you know. I know.
Right.
It's not political. I mean, and it's not, I mean.
So you said that you just, you wanted to see them survive. And while I can support that, I just wanted to say that for me, and I think the rest of council, we don't want to just see them survive. We want to see them thrive. So I think that these partnerships, like we've all sat here and like Brent pointed out, are so important because you can't do it on your own and we can't do it on our own and we're all working towards the same goal. So I think it's especially important that we have a consistent partner, that we have people who know, are in administrative roles, that know what they're doing and have this experience and are positioned to take this to the next level. And I think with our partnerships, we can get it there. So I hope that we know, especially meetings like this where we can all sit together and have these ideas back and forth are extremely helpful. And I hope this will be something we can continue.
You hit it right there. You said a few very important details and the one that sticks out in my head is succession training. And that's what this strategic meeting can provide us on how to do proper strategic succession training because Wendy's been on three years, I've been on three years, but we don't have anybody here who's been five years, six years. And it seems like every time we have an election, we start over. So that's another thing we're going to get out of the strategic planning is how to do proper succession training and prepare the next person to come on board to assume leadership roles.
So you're.
So before he goes too far with that, I think the way our bylaws are set up is three years is kind of the max so that there's a transition when people.
Just bring it on.
Oh, as members. Okay.
Now, do you guys, what are your plans in terms of hiring an experienced executive director? Because we're talking about, you know, long term and, you know, setting us up for success in the future.
Can we, can we back up just one second?
Yeah.
So Rodney said, from when I came on, it's like creating the wheel.
Yes. I've seen that. Over the past few years, it's like, it'll go, new people come on and the wheel goes in a different direction.
Absolutely. And I can completely respect that you want to meet with us and you want to know what's going on. But really, everyone is working toward the same goal. But we have a lot of obstacles in our way. One, we are a seasonal town and our budget has to reflect a seasonal town because it doesn't matter what we do in June, July, and August. I don't know anyone who's going to go stand outside here for an event. It isn't going to happen. People leave town, new businesses coming into town, if they're not from a seasonal town, that's difficult to sell them on now because you've got about, actually more than three months. You've got about five months where we're just kind of floating along. And it, there's a lot of things that you've got, is that mine? Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I've been in seasonal towns most of my life where we ran May through October, October through May. And it's, it's a different animal and it takes a lot of work and a lot of pulling together. And on top of it, Florence's beauty are these old buildings. And it's also our biggest nightmare because there are, it does have to make code. And I understand, I don't want my building going up in flames because the building next to me did. And if, so I get all of it, but it is a difficult sell. And when we're doing all of this strategic planning, we have to keep that in mind or it's to no use. I mean, we can keep spinning our wheels here, but nothing has been created. I, for one, I don't know anything that's, there is no standard operating procedures here that I'm aware of in the Chamber. So every time one of us goes out or everyone rotates out, it's a brand new venture. And it's, we've got to stop it somewhere. It has got to come to a stop. We've got to take the time and get this all planned out. If nothing for, not for us, for the people coming in behind us. Because at this point, the businesses have kind of tossed their hands up. I think they, they get a little bit agitated that we can't fix some problems. We're trying. We really are. Each of us are vested in the community. We all have a business here. None of us want to go home at night watching it fail. We're all putting in our time. We're trying to figure it out. But we have to really come up with some plans, keeping in mind that we are an extremely seasonal town. And we are removed from a lot. I mean, now we do have Queen Creek and everything coming in finally and it does give some access. But we've got to keep that in mind when we're creating this. And we are, again, creating the wheel. I mean, I don't know how many years this Chamber's been in existence because I haven't paid attention, but we're, every year I see it starting up anew. And it's disheartening for all of us, I'm sure. I know it is for me and I know it is for the town. And so I can only imagine for my fellow Chamber members, it's the same. We all have the same goal. We've just got to figure out how to get there. We are trying. Everyone, I forget the gentleman's name at the end.
John Anderson.
Mr. Anderson. We really are trying to get out there and bring Anthem out to us, or this direction, so.
I know it's hard.
We are open for suggestion.
No, I love that you guys are open to suggestions. Some things that I've suggested to some of the business owners that I've talked to one-on-one, some I haven't had a chance to talk to one-on-one, but like store hours. Like for example, when they're open from only eight to five, it's really challenging for somebody who works, you know, out in the east or west valley and has to travel the other way for work and then comes back into town. Because, you know, for example, I'd love to get my boy's haircut down here, but you know.
We're here late.
You guys are. Yes.
I am here late.
I know. My daughter goes and gets her nails.
But I will say this.
Have you met Antoinette?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I can't stay any later. So, but I will say this, from watching the business, because I do, I watch the street and about five o'clock, there's no business in, not, the towns, the stores don't need to be open because there's no one going up and down the street.
Nobody comes in?
It is, you could walk right down the center of the street some nights.
But in all fairness, I will say that as far as total concept, the girls there are amazing.
We're late.
You ladies are late.
We're early and we're late.
Yes.
I've seen Suzanne, the owner of the, Suzanne, she goes in at five o'clock in the morning, doesn't leave till eight o'clock at night. Antoinette will do the same thing. It has to be on, make an appointment, but she'll do that. So I've talked to Kim, the owner of Bucksford Style, several times and she stays, I think, thirty minutes past what people would, she'll, it's five-thirty, I believe. So she comes in at ten, stays open till five-thirty. That way, the people that do get off at five can make it down to her shop. Maybe two or three people show up during the week, Friday, maybe you get five. Myself, I've always left myself where some nights I'm sitting in my office till eight o'clock at night. Do people come in past five? Absolutely not. And there's a time where it's past three o'clock and they don't come in. So I don't really think hours of operation has anything to do with that.
Well, I would think.
Streets are pretty dead.
I would think that if, if all the businesses agreed to stay open like on Friday night, for example, because I live in a small town and that's what they did, was Friday night, all the businesses stayed open till, I don't remember, eight o'clock or something, you know. And it took a while for everybody to get used to that. But once, it took hold. They had, they had pretty good business on Friday night.
So the problem with that is, like, all the restaurants in town are open past five o'clock, but we're talking about, I know you didn't specifically say Main Street and I'm not putting words into your mouth, but the restaurants are open past five o'clock. The banks, they can't be, whatever. But if Wendy stayed open past five and the hardware store stayed open past five, that's really all there is. There's us and then there's a bunch of closed businesses. So it's, you're talking about four or five of us. We are open. Wendy is there late. And so it, I mean, it's a ghost town. I don't.
So we're just talking about business down here on Main Street?
No, we're talking about all businesses. I know you're right over on seventy-nine.
Yeah. No, that's what I said.
But in some of our, in some of our open buildings that we do have, not only just on Main Street, but we also have commercial property available throughout, we've, you know, talked about incentives of, you know, how we can entice people to come in, making sure that the buildings are up to code, making sure that we can find tenants that are habitable in there. It seems like we need to find more people, which is what we're trying to do. And then those hours, if they were extended, would be helpful, but right now that's not our solution.
Yeah. And even during, you know, like I said, if May through October, that's when they're going to make a living. And outside of those, it's going to be tough. That's, that's a hard sell to a new business or somebody who wants to pick up and move from somewhere and come to a seasonal town. It happens. I mean, look at Wickenburg.
Mm-hmm.
That place is phenomenally run and it is, every store on the street is, but it didn't happen overnight. It took many, many, many years. I was there when it was closed businesses, empty buildings, a cricket could chirp and you could hear it at seven o'clock at night. And now it's different.
Now, we do have some great partnerships that are coming in, especially through IP and some corporate partners, as well as some mom and pops that want to be able to join in that partnership. We're working through our code enforcement to get those buildings up, prepared, ready, whether they're going to be rented out or whether they're going to be sold, that is yet to be determined. That's up to the owners. But that's, just so you guys are aware, that's something that we're working towards. And those are discussions that we've been having. Go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
Vibrant downtown. We certainly have the low property value that entices people to invest in our downtown. But one of the reasons why the low property values are there, and it sounds like an oxymoron, but actually higher property values would benefit us more for investment. But there comes a critical point where the desire, the draw to invest in these types of buildings for certain types of businesses kind of turns the paradigm. And what our hope is, is to generate jobs and to generate opportunities in Florence that stimulate some redevelopment and some infill. And we certainly are, from a town perspective, committed to try and enhance those values and try to enhance the desire for folks to do redevelopment or infill development in town. We're also working very hard to try and recruit different types of businesses here. And not all those businesses are large businesses. Some of them are small. And in towns like Florence, oftentimes from an economic development perspective, the small businesses are overlooked, chasing jobs. That certainly is not our protocol. We're very interested in, in bringing in small business. We're very interested in assisting our existing businesses to expand. Work with us. There's exciting times to come in Florence. And as those investments and as those jobs and those people come, property values will be enhanced. Investment will be enhanced. We really need folks to clean up properties to assist. We need folks to bring their buildings up to code, to enhance those opportunities. And we need folks to get attracted to the downtown. And you guys play a very important role in that in terms of the visitor's center and the state park. State Parks has been a really good partner. We went to them, Jennifer and I did last year, and we said, look, this facility has been neglected. And we really, and Sue Black has been wonderful to work with. We really need some help. She came down, we said, we need new signage. This needs a new roof. There needs to be work done on the porches. There needs to be some resolution with respect to the building in the back. What do we call that? The Archives Building. Most recently, it has been enhancements to the alarm and the fire alarm system. And State Parks has come to play. You're going to see the town make some more investments in the Silver King in the next year because the Silver King has had some issues you're probably aware of. But we're working very hard to market. As a matter of fact, we had information that we provided today on the redevelopment plan and our infill plans in the downtown. So more excitement to come. There's some, there's some interest in a couple of the buildings downtown as we speak. And it's looking very good for more investment in the downtown. So bear with us.
Can, you know, because I hear people all day long that are in the community and, correct me if I'm wrong, I completely understand, I believe I do, the small town, the old buildings. I know a lot of them are privately owned. A big problem lies with what the community sees. Because they don't see that Bill Jones owns the building and Bill Jones didn't bring the building up to code. They see that the town doesn't want business. And that's a big problem right there. I get, as I have said to people who say, I don't know why they can't just let them come in and put their business in and then get up and running. Well, because if their business catches on fire, we lose downtown. It's gone. The whole thing will go up in smoke. So there is some education that needs to go to the outside. I don't know if it needs to be in a newspaper or a town discussion or what, but they need to understand when the buildings are privately owned, the town can't enforce, as long as they're not using them, they cannot enforce that they are brought up to code.
There's, there's.
Drives businesses out.
Two unique challenges there. Number one is, is the life, safety, and liability challenge that we're faced with. Sometimes very good things also come with a negative connotation. So one of the reasons, I don't know if you all are familiar, but we reached a very high milestone this last year in that our ISO rating by the independent board that evaluates towns, their code enforcement and their fire services, put the town of Florence, in terms of our rating, higher than most every community in Arizona and in the top ten percent of the country. Well, you arrive there by paying particular attention to the codes, by having trained folks, trained apparatus, quality infrastructure. These are all things that we're working towards and everyone in Florence benefits from that because their insurance goes down because of our high rating. But part of that is providing the infrastructure, enforcing the codes, and having the qualified personnel. One of the misnomers that exists is that the town doesn't work with folks. That exactly is not the case. That's, that's not true whatsoever. I won't say it in a public session and on TV, but there are a number of folks right now that we're currently working with that we've either given six months to make changes and clearly defined what changes have to happen in those buildings to completely bring them up to code, or we've given them twelve months to do that. And we do work with folks. Now, we make sure that folks meet minimum public safety standards. And the way that we handle that is through certificate of occupancy. So there's one business that I'm going to keep nameless that everyone keeps saying doesn't have a CFO. It's not true. They do have a CFO. It's a conditional CFO and they can do certain things in the building with the intent. And we've given them time to bring the building up to code to where they can have full occupancy. Most cities don't do that. Florence is very flexible and has worked with folks and tried to provide some sage advice. But there is a Western spirit that exists in Florence and a lot of small towns in Arizona that just are, there shouldn't be any rules. This is the way it's always been and that's the way it should always be. And when you increase your professionalism, when you increase your ISO rating, that comes with doing things the right way and protecting life, safety, and public welfare, which is really what government's role is.
I don't want to get too far off subject because this is the Chamber and the Chamber is about members and the members are not only on Main Street. It's great. And I think what we'll do just to kind of address what you have mentioned is take advantage of you offering Mr. Solis. Maybe plan something so that he can come and speak, not just to our members, but maybe the community so that everybody is educated and has that knowledge. I think that's very important. I think that's very important. But I don't want to just focus on Main Street because Mr. Power has his business off of the 79. And, you know, there's four little businesses just in his shopping center. So I would like, one of our goals to be is to go beyond Main Street because although Main Street is great, my business is there. There is so much more to Florence than Main Street.
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask the, you know, the chamber to help us advertise, you know, some of the, or counter some of the rumors that go around downtown, like the town won't let you do this. You know, and you've talked about what some of the issues are.
And that's why I propose that maybe when the winter months are here, when we have a lot more of our residents, they can attend this, I'm not even sure what we would call it at this point, but where Mr. Solis can come and address some of those questions to the best of his knowledge. Also invite our members, the business owners, because they all have questions as well. So it's a great opportunity for us to work with the town or town staff to provide that knowledge to everyone.
Yeah, well, you know, the one question I get asked quite a bit, well, why doesn't the town do this? Why doesn't the town pay to fix these buildings up? Well, you know that we can't do that because we don't own those buildings.
And the chamber gets those same questions.
Yeah.
We do.
We can only answer so much. I mean, I
Well, it'd be nice if, you know, because obviously, there are a lot of people come into this town and they'll go buy a building or lease a building before they find out what's required to open the business. So if, and like I say, they don't even come to the town and ask us until after the fact. And then everybody, they tell everybody, "Oh, the town, you know, they're making us do this or that." That we didn't know about that. So I'm just wondering if maybe some of your real estate members could inform them when they come to town and look to open a business, if they get ahold of you guys. And I mean, nobody can read anybody's mind. I mean, we've had people in the last couple of years come in, buy a piece of property, and then turn it commercial, and it's not commercial. And, I mean, without even checking the zoning or whatever. And so I'm just figuring if there's some way that, if somebody does come to you or on your websites or whatever, you know, let them, advise them. If you don't want to give out the advice, just advise them to come down to the town and talk to staff before they invest, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever, buying a piece of property.
I know what you're saying, Bill, but in an ideal world, that would happen? But a lot of times, the business owners of a potential business don't seek out the chamber first, or?
It's not even that. It's bigger than that. Because you have realtors that come from the valley that are selling some of the local property.
I'm just saying
They have no idea. You've got local realtors that also don't know and are selling this property. I do have a client to be named, nameless. And he looked at the property. So there's, I mean, and it was still sold. So that, that situation is much bigger than what a chamber can do. No doubt that we would be more than glad to try to help. I think the only way to be a solution is if we work together.
Right. And just in the effort of time, because I do want to stick to our agenda, I apologize. I just kind of want to switch gears for two seconds. Strategic planning. I know this is a huge factor that has brought us all together. So what benefits do you foresee? I mean, we want to work with strategic Go ahead. I'm just trying to because we have a council meeting in eight minutes, so.
I just want the chamber to know that I'm not putting it on your back or insinuating that, you know, that there isn't, that, you know, you can solve it. All I'm saying is, it amazes me, you would think that people, I've been amazed, that how many people come in this town and spend a lot of money to open a business? And they never, I mean, apparently, I don't know if they had never owned a business.
The chamber is not being utilized properly by incoming people. I totally agree with that.
Well, I'm just saying that it seems, I'm shocked at how many people come in, either they haven't had a business before, or they've gotten away with just going in and buying a residential property and then running a business out of it, or not, you know, I mean, yeah, we've had problems with it. And it's a shame. I mean, it's not our fault. It's not your fault. It's just too bad that, there's got to be a solution where we can get the word out when people are buying property to know what's required.
Adam, man.
All right. I agree. And I appreciate everything that you said. And I know that you guys do, too. So strategic planning, I know from talking to council members and staff, we kind of want to just gauge, like, the level of commitment. Like, how, you've had an opportunity to kind of reflect. And I know that you guys are committed to making Florence great. You guys have really brought on a lot of amazing events, like the car show. You guys, in talking with you, have a lot of plans to move forward. But the commitment for strategic planning, because there's kind of like a financial obligation on our side coming forward, tell us what that means to you.
So, May 15th, we did get together and we all had a responsibility to answer the questions that Cara Lee had sent to us. It was a brainstorming session. We all brought some very good answers. We put a draft together. And it's really helped us have a better understanding of where we really want this to go. And so many of us are on the same page. Would it benefit the chamber? Absolutely, absolutely. It would definitely, and it would help to show direction, where we're going and what we're going to do and what amount of time. I do think that it's going to take more than today to come to that decision. Because I do, I am, I really would like to find a more cost-effective way. I'm not going to kid you. I didn't watch the video, but I heard a number of about 12,000. I believe that there has to be a more cost-effective way that a small chamber like ours can come up with a strategic plan that is not going to require $12,000. I have met with
Wendy, I reflect back on, and just so the council knows,
thank you, Ms. Wall, for attending all the chamber meetings and briefing me about those meetings. I got the opportunity to attend a couple of meetings with Ms. Wall and with Jennifer. And I've attended one since Wendy's been chair. The other two or three that I attended, Rodney was chair. And after listening to a number of the meetings and not really participating much, but just paying attention, I could feel that there was a little bit of animosity that existed. And so in one meeting, while I was there, I looked at Rodney as a chair and I said, "What can the town do to help you?" And he said three things. I remember two of the three. One of those, oh, I remember all three. Number one, more participation from the town staff and the town council in chamber events. Number two, assistance with special events. At that time, it was particularly the car show. Rodney, in particular, asked me, "Hey, Brent, can you help us out? We really want to make this event a success." The third part was assistance with strategic planning. And at that point, I decided to move forward in that fashion and see in what way we could draft and put something together that would be very beneficial to the chamber. That would not only be strategic planning, but would be looking at bylaws and make sure that things are aligned with other chambers. That would be bringing in some training and providing some expertise in terms of good examples of how chambers and towns work together. The 12,000, as originally proposed, would have been zero dollars out of the chamber's pocket. I went to council and requested that 12,000 dollars. I will tell you that I think 12,000 dollars is cheap for the scope of work that we put together. I think if we actually went and did an RFP on the street, we'd have numbers for that same scope of work that would be twice that amount. And that's from somebody who does these types of studies all the time and used to be a consultant. But from my perspective, from the staff's perspective, to bring us together, to create a strategic plan for the chamber that the town is involved in and to get us on the right path, that's almost priceless in the town of Florence because it's a real opportunity for us to come together and work together towards a common end. I think today has shown us that there's a lot of commonality. There's a lot of desire. And most importantly, in my mind, there's a lot of passion. There's passion on this side of the table. There's passion on this side of the table. There's passion on that side of the table. And, you know, quite honestly, as I said over here as a staff person, I'm humbled with successful business owners that have come together for the betterment of Florence and to come here and sit with us today. And I would suggest, Mayor, that maybe we should do something like this on an annual basis.
I'd even go further, especially with wanting to go with the strategic plan. You hit the nail on the head when you said it shows direction. Because speaking, speaking from going through the experience, it was a lengthy process. But it not only brought our council together and gave us the direction that was much needed, but it also brought our staff and council together. So we have that support and that direction that we know where we're going. You know, obviously, there's an election coming up. Should anybody, well, we'll have one new member. You know, Becky's not running again. And that, those guiding documents, it's still going to carry forward for, oh, gosh, I don't know, I can't find the word. It's like, continuity. But that's not the word I wanted to use. So it continues on into the future. So there's not change, as you mentioned, Antoinette, where, you know, we're going in a good direction. New people come on board, and now we're going in another direction.
Consistency.
That's it. Thank you. Who helped me?
So I just kind of wanted to, since we're pushing the envelope here a little bit. First of all, I wanted to thank you all. And I have enjoyed very much being the council liaison to the chamber board. It's been beneficial to me to be able to communicate some of the ideas and the information that you put forth in your meetings to other members of the council and staff. And of course, having Jennifer there and her knowledge of the contract that we have with the chamber and also being eyes and ears for us. My hope for today was three-part. Number one, I think it's been proven that we all have a mutual understanding that we want what's best for the town and for our businesses in the town. Second of all, I personally see us as co-equal partners in the town. And, you know, one is no good without the other. If we don't have our equal cooperation, we won't succeed in growing the town and the success of our businesses. And last but not least, and I think probably the most important item, is that I hope to improve communication. Not only between our two entities, but also throughout the town of Florence, whether it's Anthem, Florence Gardens, you know, the core of the town and the businesses within that core. I think we've made strides in that regard, but I don't think that this should be the end. And I hope that we can do this again and that we can continue to hear your ideas and your feedback about where you might want the town to chime in and also where the council and the staff might feel that we could help. So I just want to thank you for being here. And I think we had a productive hour.
I agree.
I just want to echo the same things that Karen has said. Also, I mean, I feel like we are the equal partner and that we're all working towards the same vision. I do think it would be very helpful, at least when we were discussing the strategic plan, that we didn't have a representative to speak on your behalf. And I think it'd be both beneficial for, on your side as well as for our side, if you guys attend or at least watch the videos of what's going on in live times. At least when there's economic development things that we're talking about. I think it's really helpful just to even, if you have a quick question or before, after, if you can send a representative or have even a discussion or open yourself up for comments or questions before something's on your agenda or when it's
I would agree that we do need to have a representative. We've spoken about that. But in fairness to the chamber, we weren't aware that that was going to play out the way it played out. So we would, we had been given a list of activities that we needed to put to, items that we needed to put together, and we did do all of it. So we weren't just sitting back thinking, "Well, if the town foots the bill, we're going to get it done." That wasn't it at all. We were actively working on it. And when we were told that no one was here to represent us, in fairness, just, we did not know that it was going to be something put on the table for us to be here and to fight for. So, and the reason I bring it up is when it was in the newspaper, the way it looks is if the chamber didn't care about it. And in fact, that's not it. We are all very happy to have that opportunity. We know that we need the direction. We know that we need a strategic plan. So we're happy to be here to represent, but that one was a little bit off.
No, I agree. I agree. And Karen and I had spoken this weekend. And actually, you know, she had shared that with me, as well as, you know, in the future, you guys were going to be working out who would attend meetings. And, no, and that wasn't fair. I heard that because of what was printed, you had a member that actually resigned from the board.
Yes. It looked bad on our part. It looked as if you guys offered us this golden egg and we were like, "Yeah, well, if it works in our schedule, take it." That's not, in fact, at all what happened. We were all very happy about it. We all put together what we were asked to put together. We all agreed to be at the meeting or to start the event. And then we were told that it was voted against. So it wasn't as if we said, "Hey, we'd really like to have this. And if we show up, we show up." That wasn't it at all. We were all very vested in the program. And it did look to our members and the local community as if we just didn't take it as that big of a deal. Because it did say, "No one was there to represent the chamber." Well, none of us even knew. We were all geared up to be at the meeting the next day at the start of the strategic planning. And then we got an email that night that told us it was not happening. So.
Okay, see, that's new information to myself.
And I mean, if that's
So
I think it's important for you to have an understanding of what's going on within the town. And we talk about that stuff publicly. Manager's report, he often goes through about new things that are happening and where we're at on existing plans and where we're moving forward. So I think it's important for you guys to be informed as far as what the big picture is, not just what's going on with the chamber. So that's why I just made that suggestion. Overall, it's good for you guys to be informed.
We did meet, I'm new to the board, by the way, so I'm learning a lot. But we did meet on the 15th, and we have committed to having a presence at your monthly meetings to just to kind of see what's going on in the town and report back. So we do have a rotation set up. So one of us will be here. And if, like, I think I have the month of August. So if I can't make it, I'm supposed to email somebody to get me, get some representation from the chamber at the town council meetings. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
All right, well. Okay, so we are going to set up additional work sessions. We want to continue this dialogue with the chamber. I would like you to, to invite you actually to stay. We are going to be celebrating Jeff Mosher. He's retiring after 27 years of service. I know most of you know him. And so if you'd like to stay for the council meeting as well, we'd love to have you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming. It was so nice to meet everybody. I had not met everybody on the board, so I do appreciate it. All right, if everybody can be ready. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We are going to come back from our work session and start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. Our first item is Call to the Public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss nor take action during any open call to the public unless they're properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have one call to the public. Mrs. Sharon Gerard. Chief Hughes, could you give her...oh, there's a podium right over here. We rearranged for this evening. I apologize. And you are a candidate for the state senate.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. My name is Sharon Gerard. You wanted my address?
Um...
You have it right now. Okay. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am a candidate for state senate in this district. I'm a Democrat. I live in Eloy. I spent my career for 30 years working as a physician assistant in emergency medicine, OB-GYN, rural health, and I was passionate about my career in caring for my patients. And I plan to bring the same passion, after recently hanging up my stethoscope, to the state senate for health care that is affordable and accessible for all, and quality public education and restoring funding to education which is so needed, and also addressing issues for our growing and rural district. And I just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Are there any more Call to the Public this time? All right, with that, we are closing Call to the Public. Item 9A is a presentation. This is a retirement presentation celebrating Captain Jeff Mosher's May 25, 2018 retirement after 27 years of service to the town of Florence. And I just want to say how nice it is that everybody came out to support him, and your Class A is very nice.
Thank you, mayor. Jeff, could you join me up here, please? Mayor, would you join us, please? I brought my notes up here just so I get the dates right, but I don't really need notes to talk about Jeff. I've known him for 25, 30 years. But Captain Jeff Mosher is, he's retiring as captain, but as you're going to find out, he's done so much more than that. Started with the town of Florence in, I have here, 1990 in the Public Works Department. In 92, he joined the part-time fire department. If anything's not correct, correct me, okay? In 97, he became the full-time firefighter here. Since then, he has filled every position in the department: firefighter, engineer, captain, interim chief, chief. Did I miss anything? Inspector. I can tell you as somebody that's been in Pinellas County for a long time, he was Florence Fire for many years. He was integral in developing the department to what it is today. Very dedicated individual. So many memories of calls with him. We did musters together, just a lot of very good, positive memories. And I think the biggest fire we were on together, Jeff, was the high school. That's the biggest one I can recall with you. But just the career this man has had and his dedication to this community and the extra mile he's gone, as long as I've known him, is just, I can't say enough about what an honor it is to get to recognize him tonight. So what I'd like to do is ask the mayor to say a few words and Jeff to say a few words, and then we're going to take some pictures, but we want to do it sequentially because we have a lot of folks here. So you guys follow my cues as we call people up on this, please. And so Jeff, or mayor, would you go next, and then Jeff, please?
Jeff, it's been amazing knowing you, coming to Florence. You are Florence Fire. Every one of these firefighters either came in right at the same time as you, if not immediately after. So you've essentially brought forward this force that's now serving the town. You've trained them. You've put your heart and soul into the community, and for that, I'm very grateful. And I wish you the best. It's so hard to see you retire, and I want you to say a few words.
First, thank you. First of all, I want to thank all the guys, the men and women of the Florence Fire Department. The town of Florence truly has great people at the fire department and in the town in a whole. But without these guys, I wouldn't be standing here. These guys have backed me up and helped me along my career, and I just want to say thank you to everyone, and mainly to all you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So tonight, we're going to honor from the town, the award from Jeff. You can see by the turnout tonight, the level of support he has here. This is all voluntary here. These folks came in off-duty and on their own time, put their Class As on, and it's just the respect that he shows him. But I also wanted to announce that later this year, when we have our annual awards banquet, we're going to do the full honors for Jeff that you get when you worked for 25 years, 27 years in the fire service, which will be a full Class A formal recognition by the fire department at our awards banquet, which you all are invited to attend. Jeff, let's get some pictures of, starting off with the mayor and myself and Jeff and his family, please. Can we have the family come up?
I'm getting a picture.
Can you guys, the family step forward, and then we're going to be the council lineup behind you?
We can, we can sit down.
No, no, you're good. You're in some right in center. Mark, you good? You want a picture, a group shot here?
Oh.
Can we all congratulate him one more time for his service to the town of Florence? Thank you.
All right. Item number 9B is presentation on the Town of Florence 2017-2018 Capital Improvement Program, Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam mayor, members of council, how cool was that?
That was amazing.
I have not seen that many grown men get misty in a long time, so I guess it takes a retirement to make that occur. This is the second annual presentation of this type, and it gives me great pride to stand in front of the council, the audience, all the staff members of the town of Florence, and of course, our residents watching at us at home and in the audience this evening to kind of brag on the town's accomplishments and to let everybody know that although we've accomplished a whole lot in the last year, it couldn't be done without the support of the town council and their approval of our capital improvement program on an annualized basis. Our hard-working staff that contributes in every way possible to be able to complete these things on an annualized basis. And lastly, to the taxpayers that support us. And just know that as part of this presentation, we take the public fiduciary very seriously and the use of your taxpayer funds to make your life better very seriously. Number of projects, there's a whole bunch. This is always cool to present, but there are a number of projects, and as you'll see in various different departments, starting off with the improvements to the Central Bark Park. Obviously, couldn't have done it without a grant from PetSafe. Where's Brian? There's Brian. Signage, benches, accoutrement, if you will, as part of the Bark Park. And after the project was completed, Brian went and toured me at the facility, and there were a lot of happy customers, if you will. My family participated in the ribbon cutting and utilized the Bark Park on that day. So really a cool project. We just got done with a joint meeting, for any of you that weren't here, between the Florence Chamber and the town, council and staff. One of the first requests that the town received when I hired on over a year and, two year, two and a half years ago, was that there was a need for some signage on State Route 79 to direct folks to the Historic Business District. What a neat project this was, what a low-cost project this was to really, in a very professional way, highlight our central business district and try to draw folks to the downtown. Another one of the projects that first came up when I came onboard was our downtown and especially the challenge that existed between having horses in parades and very slippery surfaces. So as I recall, this is the third different treatment of these intersections that has occurred over the last decade, and I'm happy to report, we have had zero horses slip since these new coatings were done, and it's very beautiful as well. I want to, Dan is in the back here, as well as some of our Public Works folks today. Our Public Works folks take great pride in what this project looks like and how it turned out. I don't know if council's noticed, but every six months, they go out and power wash that. Three weeks ago, they actually went and power washed all these lines in these intersections to keep them looking nice. But what a neat project in the downtown. I get compliments all the time on outside of town or from folks from outside of town on how great our downtown looks and how cool these intersections are. So what a neat project. Coupled with that, a project that had been 15 years in the making, the downtown Main Street, Streetscape project, this was approved, it's actually more than 15 years ago. This was approved when I worked for CAG in the late 90s. And I'm very happy to say that we got it across the finish line, and we get a lot of very positive comments about the benches, the trash receptacles, the LED lighting. The LED lighting is beautiful for our special events. What a neat project. Well number four, you're going to hear more about well number four in the future because we have some repairs we need to do to well number four. But one of the projects that was completed was some upgrades to well number four. You see the big green thing that looks like a finger there? That's a spiral sand separator that was installed, new controls, new chlorination system, well number four. Diversion Dam and State Route 79 signal. That's another project that had been discussed in Florence for more than a decade and just couldn't seem to get across the finish line. It is now completed. Not only the reconstruction and the widening of diversion dam road, but the improvement of the drainage issues that existed in that corridor, a relocation of an irrigation ditch, which you would never know is there because it's actually tiled and goes through the intersection. That was all redone, as well as completion of a traffic signal at that location. Very important location, as you see, McDonald's adjacent to it. These things always come together. It's interesting that when government spends money on infrastructure, other people seem to follow. In this case, it's not odd to me that shortly after the improvement of the intersection of the street, McDonald's actually redid their building and added to their building. And it really has made that corner safer and more attractive. Highway and Addaway Road signal. I believe that council member Anderson spoke to that one during the previous meeting. When I first got to Florence, I think it's very fair in saying this was the top council priority. As a matter of fact, I started in 2015. The month before I started, you see the orange cabinet on the right? That was the temporary traffic signal that we borrowed from Pinellas County that was located at that intersection. So to go from no control, which I'm told was an absolute disaster, to having been able to work out a deal to have a temporary traffic signal, to now a fully functioning traffic signal, and as you can tell, there's additional width there to allow that intersection to expand in the future, which is a future capital improvement project. What a great project for the town of Florence. Florence Heights Drive. When I worked for the county 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, Florence Heights Drive was built. It was a cooperative effort between the county and the town. It had fallen into significant disrepair, and the town staff received a lot of complaints, quite honestly, about Florence Heights Road. I have gotten so many positive comments from residents and business owners over the last year concerning the quality of that job and now the quality of that road, to the point now where I get, how do I want to say, requests fairly frequently to limit truck traffic on that road because they don't want the big trucks to tear that road up again, to put it back in the condition that it was in. The Brunin Camp Building Fire Sprinklers. One of the things that I think is really neat about the town of Florence and... about the Town of Florence and the leadership comes from the council level, is putting our money where our mouth is. We have a lot of conversation about historic buildings and needed safety improvements and needed upgrades. Council has really invested in our resources downtown, from the wireless fire alarm system that everyone in the downtown is able to use, that the Town provides, and it allows folks to have a reduced cost, to the improvements that we've done in our own buildings to bring them up to code. This last year's primary example is the Brunin Camp Building, a building that the Town had owned for many years, one of the most important historic structures in the Town of Florence. What an undertaking it was, and a sizable investment on behalf of the council to go ahead and put fire sprinklers in that building. We're going to do something similar, as a matter of fact, I just signed the PO, I think, earlier today, to put a fire alarm in the gym building this year before the end of the fiscal year to keep investing in these buildings, so we're not just expecting other folks to take the code seriously, we're obviously taking the codes very seriously ourselves and trying to protect the downtown. Water vending station, when I first got here, one day I was out with Tim, Tim's out here in the audience, he's in the back, and we were talking about the water vending station, and we were talking about the fact that it kept going down, and while we were sitting there watching it, I saw some folks when we got there were filling up their water tanker that was on a trailer, I'm assuming to haul potable water to their house, and the next person I saw to drive up and utilize the hose was a local pest company, insect-killing company, and they used the same hose to fill their tank in, the exterminator, I guess is the term I'm looking for, and I said, "Well, this has got to change." And thank you to council for funding the project, thank you for the Public Works staff taking it so seriously and doing it right. Tim and his team really took this project seriously, did it right, and I know that in the forthcoming future, a lot of folks are going to really appreciate the effort, Tim, that you and the guys, and the passion that you and the guys put into doing this right, so thank you very much. The wireless fire alarm we talked about, what are the benefits of the wireless fire alarm? We worked with a couple of different historic properties about two years ago regarding making sure that their buildings were monitored and alarmed, and they got quotes back anywhere from $12,000 to $20,000 to install true licensed fire monitoring and alarm systems in their buildings. Dave Strayer, where's Dave, made it his personal passion to try and figure out a better way to do this. He started researching wireless fire alarms and taking that all the way from is it UL listed to do they make commercial systems with respect to this, and how can those be applied in historic buildings? What a cool thing, because we were able to take Dave's research and make that a reality in the downtown. The panel exists, we have one building online, two others, there's two buildings online now, two others, one other, I'm sorry, there's two online, one other that's about to join, as well as our building, and the more buildings that are on and the further they reach down Main Street, one of the reasons that I pushed to do the gym this year is we physically have to put a voter on the outside of the building to receive, it's kind of like a repeater for radios, we're going to put a receiver on the outside of the building, but it not only receives, it transmits, so the more that we invest in those repeaters, the less it costs the individual property owners to actually install the fire alarm, so the more people that we have participate, actually the cheaper it is for everyone, and I believe it's a great resource, and hopefully over the next year, more people will take advantage of that. South wastewater plant, we had a decrepit belt press, and I won't make any, well, maybe I will make a cake joke, okay? We have put in a new dewatering device, this is it, it's very similar to our old device, it's more efficient, and it works tremendously well, so thank you for investing in the Town and our staff to have good solutions for the public. Our blowers at the wastewater plant, one of the challenges that the Town had over the last decade is a lot of new infrastructure was installed, but it hadn't received a lot of maintenance, and so we reached a point, these blowers are huge, the picture does not do them justice, each one of those blowers is about as big as your car and about four feet taller than your car, so it'd be like taking a SUV and then lifting it 10 inches. These things are huge, they're massive pieces of metal and cast iron. We actually had one of these that failed, thanks to council support, we were able to replace it, replace another one that was about to fail, and rebuild the others, so our blowers are good in the future, and we now have an excellent maintenance program for working with the manufacturer. We're able to do a whole bunch of SCADA repairs, so a SCADA system is an electronic system that allows our wastewater operators to operate the wastewater plant remotely, or at least use remote sensing as part of that operation. We have a similar SCADA system for our water system that shows our wells, our booster pumps, our storage tanks, how much water is in them, so for those watching in the public, what we're showing here is mixing and aeration with respect to the SBR cells, SBRs 1, 2, and 3. Two of them were on at the time, one of them was off. The other cell that's missing there is our sludge digester, but this gives you a good idea of what it looks like to our operators when they're operating the plant. One of the things that we had received a comment on from ADEQ in the past had to do with the way that we de-chlorinated our treated effluent, so as part of the water treatment process, we add chlorine. We add chlorine to kill bacteria, make sure that that water is really clean, but if we're going to discharge that water into the river or into the waters of the US, that chlorine then needs to be taken out of that water. We installed this last year, a new de-chlorination system that includes the storage and the sensing that's adjacent to that, so very good project at the wastewater treatment plant. The admin building, the roof had failed, we've had two or three buildings with major roof problems, so in terms of the admin building, we're able to repair the roof, thank you very much, goes out to the facilities department. Sequential batch reactors, or SBR, these are the actual treatment processes at the tank, so if you look at the SBR on the left, that particular cell is in mixing mode at that time, it's not aerating, it's simply mixing, what we call the mixed liquor, no, I won't make any jokes about that. The one on the right is actually being drained, so you can see how low the water level is in that tank. We were able to bring number one down and completely rebuild it, we're in the process of bringing number three down and completely rebuilding it at this time. Our pumps that we use for what we call post-equalization to our filter plant, there's three pumps there, two of the pumps completely went down over the last year, the last one was holding on by a thread, we're able to replace one, rebuild the other, and we have a third in backup. These are very complicated processes, and these parts were out, but council's really allowed us to invest in that infrastructure. One of the things, if Jason was here tonight, he'd be particularly proud of, is our equipping of our lab at the south wastewater plant. These are two of the new pieces of equipment that we're able to bring online. The piece of equipment on the left is a sampling device, the piece of equipment on the right is actually for drying and testing sludge, yeah, I'll stay out of that, but we have a very well-equipped lab, and our staff has continued their training, very proud of our staff and all of the advancements that they continue to make with that lab operation. So for the folks that live in Anthem, one complaint that I used to get all the time was how bad the railroad crossing was at Felix Road north of Anthem, and I had been told many times, "Well, we've talked to the railroad and they just won't fix it." Well, we were able to connect with the Arizona Corporation Commission, which is really the only entity in Arizona that has control over railroad crossings, and work with their staff and with the railroad to do a joint project here where the railroad came in and fixed the ballast material and repaired that crossing using the timbers that you see there, and then the Town was able to come up to that with a chip seal project and do the traffic control for that project, so what a nice joint effort that I think folks, Tim crosses it every day, Joe crosses it every day, I think folks appreciate that that is much smoother than it used to be. Booster pumps at well number five, it's too bad that our ex-mayor left, because when I first started in Florence, we took a tour, I believe the second day that I worked here, and he drove me over to well number five, I didn't know it was called well number five at that time, and we drove up to the gate, and I said, "I know, I know, before I even applied here, I went around and looked at your facilities and I saw what's going on here." He said, "Fix it." So I'm happy to say, Tom, the booster pumps are fixed at well number five, two new booster pumps there, new setup with respect to that, and they're working fantastically. Similar to that, not to just ignore the storage capabilities at that site, we had two tanks at that location, one's about 750,000 gallons, if I remember right, and one's about 350,000 gallons. Those tanks have been there for a long time, they were not in great condition, council allowed us to go out and drain those tanks, assess those tanks, refit those tanks, and bring those tanks back online like they're brand-new, and we should get another 20 years out of those tanks. The tank on the right, I went in it right after it was drained, and it looked like somebody had taken a rifle and just walked around there and shot holes in the bottom of it, and all of that has been repaired, new coatings, excellent project for the Town of Florence and Florence residents. Silver King porch repairs, look who we got on the right. My daughter's there, too, that's Sophia.
She was super fun to paint with.
She makes you laugh, she doesn't get much painting done, but this is a really neat project, and although it wasn't a capital improvement project, essentially, we got a lot of complaints about that porch, about the quality of the porch, about the condition of the porch, about the safety aspects of that porch, and so we decided to do a cooperative effort between Tom and our facilities group and our, Brian, what did we call that day? Give-back day? Make-a-difference day? Where this was one of the council projects, so thank you to Mr. Hawkins and obviously the mayor and Councilwoman Larson, my two daughters and myself and my wife, Wendy assisted with that project, Jen, we lost Jen.
Any residents and people that work at Florence Gate, because you don't want to leave anybody out.
No, but I'm just talking about the porch project.
Okay.
A lot of people volunteered, but this was one of the city projects, town projects, and I think it turned out great. Tom replaced the boards, we all sanded and painted, and the results speak for themselves.
How come you didn't get a picture of yourself with the paint sprayer?
I don't get pictures of me, and the paint sprayer's a sore subject. Police car purchases, yes, you made the presentation, chief. We hope to have another police car that we're going to park out front and let everybody see here in the near term. The police fleet has gotten into tremendous disrepair over the last few years, and very long in the tooth, you can see a Crown Vic that's almost 10 years old in the background behind the nice new shiny police cruiser here. We invested in two new cruisers last year, we've invested in two more cruisers this year, which we should be getting here shortly, as well as, I'm going to call it an admin car, but it's a detective car, correct? So really investing back in our police fleet again. Here is the schools and the school district, this is a really cool project in that Main Street Park started looking a little rough and was in disrepair. Brian came to me with the idea of having the teen council work on the Main Street Park, and I went, "Oh, my goodness, this sounds like a yelling screaming match waiting to happen," and paint flung everywhere. So there's actually two parts to this project, the first one was, we had heaving concrete everywhere, so the Town and its staff went out and cut out that bad concrete, replaced the concrete, and then the kids came in, redid the tables, repainted all of the shelters, but just a really neat project, and it shows what we can all do if we work together. That park looks completely different today than it did a year ago, and that was handled within a couple weeks timeframe, and all the painting was done in one day. It's amazing what those young hands with paintbrushes can do with a little oversight. They didn't need a paint sprayer. Development Services Building, similarly, had major league roof problems, you would never know unless you were inside when the roof leaked or looked on the outside of the building. Particularly proud of this project, we hired a contractor to redo that roof, but to save money, I'm going to give Tom a shout-out, Chris, to save money, our staff actually redid the fascia and the truss extensions on that building, where there was a whole lot of wood rotting and damage to lessen the cost on the Town residents, but I haven't been up there, I went up there before we did the project, I haven't been up there after the fact, you probably don't want me up there, so I don't damage it, but a very good project. I talked about this project a little bit during the last meeting, this is a perfect example of cooperation. The McFarland State Park, in my opinion, was falling into disrepair, had an opportunity to get an audience with Ms. Sue Black, who's the head of Arizona State Parks, invited her and her team down to come and take a look and walk the facility with us, they were very receptive. Our initial intent was just to ask them to help with the sign and to make them aware of the shake-shingle roof and what we believe to not only be a problem with the building regarding the shake-shingle roof, but also the fire risk associated with that very dry shake-shingle roof in the downtown. It turned out to be a great project. State parks went all-in with respect to repairing the porch, painting the building, repairing the walls, new sign, new roof, and it's returned again to its prominence as a real feature in our downtown to be proud of. North Wastewater Treatment Plant Chlorine Building, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we addressed is, once again, making sure we're up to code in terms of how we provide our facilities. This is a brand-new prefabricated building that we were able to install, plum, provide electricity to, that has all of the modern improvements required by OSHA for a containment unit with ventilation, notification, et cetera. New sand filters at the north plant, I guess the best way to put it is, we're running out of steel to weld patches on the old one that was there, and so this is all brand-new, brand-new plumbing, brand-new vessel that we had to have, that's a pressure vessel, can only be made by certain manufacturers because it runs at high pressure, it essentially takes our treated wastewater and pushes it through a sand media at pressure before the outfall. This allows us as our final stage of cleaning before we send that water to the golf course at Florence Gardens. Effluent pump, this is the actual pump, you can see all the new piping and the new electrical there, this is the pump that actually sends the water to the golf course, it's all new. You see this in three of the pictures now, what's council think this one is? What's council think this one is? So we got one ding on our inspection last year when ADQ comes out. They come out once a year. And it was, we had an old detention pond that had been at the north plant probably for 50, 60 years that we essentially stored our treated wastewater in before it went through the filter process and to the golf course. For the first time, they actually came out this time and said, "You need to line that pond." That pond hadn't been lined, like I said, in a very, very long time, if ever. They said, "We need to line that pond." They gave us 12 months to do that. I know we've talked about it at council before, that we had to actually stop supplying water to Florence Gardens while this project gets completed. We just completed this project. So this is a picture from a couple weeks ago with the poor guys out there, over 100 degrees down in that hole on that black plastic. And I mean to tell you, it was probably 150 when I was standing up there at the top of that black plastic taking the pictures. It was a hot modine. North wastewater plant, we had to rebuild the blowers. The one on the left still hasn't been rebuilt there. The one on the right rebuilt on that tank process. Once again, another important capital improvement project. Not all these are pretty and sexy, but they're all very, very important. Waterline extensions. Very proud of something that Florence did this year that most communities don't do, that shows our commitment to our local business community and making a difference in terms of economic development. We did a development agreement with Circle K that involved a water main extension. We did an agreement with Horizon to cooperate on a water main extension. We did an agreement with Sun Life Family Health. We called it the medical facility throughout the development agreement process to extend a water main and to loop our water system. We had a bad piece on Phoenix Street that needed to be repaired. The one that is really interesting, that I'm not sure council's aware of, is the one that says Taco Bell there. We realized that fire flows were lower at Taco Bell than required in the codes. So our team, Tim, the group, Chris's support, went out and designed and extended a waterline to loop up from First Street to make sure that they had good fire flows at the Taco Bell business at no cost to Taco Bell. These are the types of things that the town of Florence does to help our local businesses and to promote economic development. HVAC replacement. This building has some bad issues. Some parts of it are really cold, some parts of it are really hot. I'm proud of our staff, although things aren't absolutely perfect. They spent a lot of time and expertise over the last year, making sure that all of our units are tuned to the best that they can be in terms of their balance. We installed a new electronic system, which is designed to save the town money in operations as well as automated controls. So whenever council says, "We're freezing tonight," all I have to do is text Tom, and Tom can lower it or increase it to make sure that everybody's comfortable. Network server upgrades. Where's Trent? Trent's not here, is he? Nope. His staff's here. We had a number of server upgrades that we needed to do this year. We were just falling behind the times as well. We needed to upgrade our Microsoft softwares this year. I know it was a real pain in his rear. Lisa manages that group. We also had to redo the print server, but we have far less problems on the printing side than we had a year ago. Did a phenomenal job with respect to that. Florence Gardens tanks, I'm going to go through these quicker now. Made repairs to the tank on the right and actually did a structural analysis on that tank to make sure that we were handling the management of that storage tank properly. New speed radar trailer, chief, which was a grant application to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, if I recall. And we had it outside here for a council meeting, and then since then, it's been deployed throughout the community. Has other capabilities in terms of it can do traffic counts, it can do speed studies, neat piece of equipment. With that, that's a pretty long list. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
I thought your presentation was very comprehensive. Regards to comments. What would be awesome is when we approve the purchases to have that visual, because that is amazing, because I know we've had an opportunity to tour some of the sites and see some of the things before, but I think that our community is really interested in it as well, but maybe in smaller doses.
Very good.
That's okay, Ben. You did a great job. All right. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is adoption of an intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the Active Transportation Plan in an amount not to exceed $18,988.73. Item B is authorization to purchase one Timco 600 regenerative air sweeper in an amount not to exceed $239,595.95 with reimbursement from the Maricopa Association of Governments' Fiscal Year 2018 Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program of $214,451 towards the street sweeper purchase price for the net price to the town of $25,144.23. And item C is approval of accepting a register of demands ending April 30, 2018 in the amount not to exceed $2,037,757.06. Are there any members of council that have any questions or want any item removed from the consent agenda? Okay. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item 11A, new business ordinance number 659-18, which is discussion, approval, and disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, which is amending Chapter 30, Section 3007 of the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances titled Compensation of Mayor and Council effective January 1, 2019. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and members of council, as we discussed in the budget sessions, if the council adopts the ordinance on January, the mayor's pay will go to $950 a month, and council members' pay will go to $650 each month. This is a first reading only. It will be brought back at the next meeting for action. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was just an ordinance, first reading only. Item B is Resolution Number 1665-18, discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, adopting a Town of Florence Fiscal Year 2018-19 Employee Compensation and Classification Plans. Mr. Scott Barber.
Mayor Walter, members of the council, we're asking this evening for approval of the resolution, which will approve the employee compensation and classification plans, the classification plans and pay plans for the upcoming fiscal year 1819. The recommendations were discussed with our budget committee in some detail, and you recall, a few weeks ago, we presented staff recommendations to you in the budget study session concerning recommendations for market adjustments and for merit adjustments. Based on the direction we received from council at that meeting, we adjusted our staff recommendation to allow for employee merit increases for up to 5% instead of the 3% that was included in the first staff recommendation. So the information that's attached here will fully implement the recommendations of our market adjustments and also will turn on, if you will, our merit program that's linked with our performance evaluation of the anniversary date for our employees starting on July 1st. I'll stand to answer any questions that you might have.
So just a few points of clarification, just to bring out, because in an article in the paper, it just, it made an incorrect statement. I was hoping you can clarify for everybody out there. It stated that only two employees in the town of Florence were going to be receiving any type of pay increase, which I know is incorrect, but I'd like to just give you an opportunity to...
Thank you, mayor. Thinking first about our merit program, all regular full-time employees will be able to receive up to 5% on their anniversary date through the year based on the score of the performance evaluation. So that everybody, that's all of our regular full-time employees on that side. On the market adjustment side, you recall that the recommendations specifically speak to putting department director group aside, 23 classifications, and there's about 47 employees in those 23 classifications that will be impacted by the recommendation. I think the confusion was that on the department director side, and remember, we originally, back in February, I think we explained this to a budget committee and to the council, we developed a recommendation at that point and did not have the, pardon me, the department directors in that process receive direction from the manager to bring them back in. And so what we've done is, we kind of brought a recommendation relationship to adjustments for department directors that we're going to adjust the ranges based on the market, but in terms of the impact of pay to the department director staff, what we're doing is looking at which department directors today under their current range are not at midpoint, and we're making those adjustments, and that only is two of our department directors. So I think that's where the confusion lies. So it's actually about 47 employees that are impacted by the market side, and then every regular full-time employee potentially impacted on the merit side.
Right. And I just, I wanted to communicate that because I want the employees to know how much this, you know, you're valued. You're valued in the town of Florence. We know that it's important to be able to attract and retain quality employees, and that's why we've worked so hard, you know, through our budget committee, through town staff, to be able to bring this forward.
Thank you, mayor. And I would add that we have not been able to fund the merit program per se since fiscal 1415. There were two years where we did a merit stipend outside of the pay program so that we wouldn't compound because we didn't know what the future held. And then last year, in order to relatively stay competitive, council authorized a 5% general adjustment, so our entire pay plan went up by 5%. So this is the first time that we've had, in really four years, of being able to get back to having our supervisors and our department directors evaluate our employees with our forms every year and then use that score to be able to reward our employees for their performance.
Right. And employees, just keep doing what you're doing, do a great job, because we truly want you all, and we've budgeted for you all to receive that 5%. So, and that doesn't mean you have to score perfect fives.
Up to five.
Yeah. It goes on a, how do we say it, Ms. Garcia? It goes on a graduated scale. So I appreciate all your hard work, the budget committee, staff, on that. That was brought forward, and any other questions by council?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1665-18.
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. All right. Resolution Number 1666-18, discussion, approval, disapproval of the resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, adopting the tentative estimates for the amount required for the public expense for the town of Florence Fiscal Year 2018-19, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the receipts, expenditures, and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of the time for a public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the state-imposed expenditure limitation and voter-approved access amounts, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is another significant step for the town of Florence in order to adopt your annual budget, and I'm pleased to be here this evening to present similar information that you've already received. The last time we met was on May 23 for a budget work session, for the entire council and the community to come out and share their comments about the budget. We have incorporated your additional comments from that meeting, and I would like to go through a presentation. I'm going to go through pretty quickly because it's information we've already kind of walked through before, but I am ready and willing to discuss any of the topics if you'd like to dive into them further. Okay. Let's talk about a little bit why we're here. The reason we're here is because, per Arizona revised statutes, the town of Florence needs to adopt an annual budget. There are specific deadlines set for that budget, and we are well within those deadlines. The citizens of our community have gratefully approved a home rule option for us and given us an expenditure limitation, and we are going to be spending well below that expenditure limitation. I keep pressing the wrong button. And let me try that.
That was a great presentation.
Done. Let's sit down and move on. Okay, there we go. Okay. Budget basics. Here's some budget basics. The town of Florence budget is broken into funds. There are distinct and separate components and operations that occur within the town. Each fund has its own revenue stream, and expenditures are tracked as part of the overall town of Florence budget. Within each fund, there are subcategories, known as departments and divisions, which further break down the expenditures for transparency. This certainly helps me keep track of the money that's coming in and the money that's going out. What have we done so far? Well, what the council, and particularly the budget committee, have done so far is reviewed all of this information, and staff has gone through specific efforts in order to propose budget requests, and we've gone to market for our benefits. We presented this information to the budget committee. They've made modifications. We presented to the whole council for your consideration. You supported the idea of the draft budget, and that's why we're here today to talk about the tentative budget. Here are some budget assumptions that we have. I think these are some critical ones. First one is the budgeted expenses are equal to or less than the budgeted revenue, except for when we receive policy direction from the council, particularly in the sanitation fund and as it pertains to the HERF bond. As of March 21, 2018, the town's budgeted state share revenue will increase by $150,000. Updated numbers are anticipated by June 4. Well, it's 6/7/12 on the June 4, and I still haven't received those numbers. So what that means is, I anticipate that the revenue is going to go up, and what that means is your final budget will be adopted at the tentative budget. We'll just anticipate we're going to collect more revenue. The reason why I won't bring back a higher budget to you at the final budget is I can't. When you adopt the tentative budget, that's a ceiling, and you can certainly make modifications to go down. We can't make modifications to go up. So if the state comes back and tells us, if the governor calls me and tells me we're getting more money, I'll be really excited, but we'll just put it in as additional revenue. I don't, I don't think he's going to call me. Oh, thank you.
Well, he was here last Friday, isn't he?
He hasn't called me yet. Do you have any questions about these budget assumptions? Do you have any questions about the previous couple slides? Thank you for that encouragement. Do you have any questions about the tentative budget?
No, it looks very promising. I like the fact that we're spending below our expenditure limitation and, you know, we're continuing to be able to prepare for our future.
Well, if not, then if y'all are ready, let's adopt a resolution.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1666-18.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Mayor, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Absolutely can have a roll call vote. Ms. Garcia, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've had lots of discussions and work sessions, and I am just so pleased at where we are. All right. Discussion approval and disapproval to enter into a contract with Ferguson Enterprises Incorporated through an Arizona Department of Administration Cooperative Contract to provide parts for water and wastewater projects in an amount not to exceed $250,000 through June 30, 2019. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is very similar to what we approved recently with Forte Line. This is for, again, infrastructure improvement projects, including the replacement of hydrants, waterline extensions, waterline repairs. These are much-needed cooperative contracts. I brought it up the last time when we approved Forte Line that I'd be coming back with Ferguson. Through Tim Wayne Scott's diligence, he has looked and seen some cost savings by having Ferguson as well. So sometimes we'll shop one, and we'll shop the other, and we'll determine, while we're not required, there's no requirement under this under the state law, we're still going to shop these individually beyond... shop these individually beyond smaller projects. And then on bigger projects, we will shop them as well to make sure that we're getting purchases, but this gives us the ability to, if one vendor is out of a resource, we've had problems in the past where vendors run out of a certain product. So this just gives us versatility, the ability for cost savings, and just benefits the town.
No pictures?
No pictures.
Okay.
If that's the bar now, I guess we can adjust.
We're gonna table, no, I'm just kidding. With that, we need a motion, or is there any questions? Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve to enter into a contract with Ferguson Enterprises Incorporated through an Arizona Department of Administration Cooperative Contract to provide parts for water and wastewater projects in an amount not to exceed $250,000 through June 30th, 2019.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side, motion carries. All right, item E, you're up again for discussion approval and disapproval to ratify a contract with Cactus Transportation, doing business as Cactus Assphalts, in an amount not to exceed So why are we ratifying, Chris?
Why are we ratifying?
Tell us about this.
Sure, I'll be glad to. We have a series of checks and balances. Generally, that process is foolproof. At the time, our street superintendent believed he had a PO, and unfortunately, there wasn't an active PO for the full amount. There was a PO for the previous year's approval, and it just was that small misstep on my staff's part, on our staff's part for, on that side there, and there was not for the full amount. So we have to ratify the full expenditure. There was a carryover from a previous year's that was still left.
Okay. All right, and we knew about this, you did communicate, so are there any other questions?
I think most importantly that needs to be addressed between Joe, myself, Brent, and Lisa is that we have further tightened up our controls. We have very good controls on our water side as far as how we monitor POs, and we're just gonna implement those across the board. This is a mistake on all levels that I own and should not have been made, but it was a mistake made that could have been made on a much smaller project. It just so happens it was on a large project.
Mr. Billingsley?
I wanna focus on the positive. Cactus Transport has done an excellent job for us, very proud of the work that they've done and our staff's done over the last three years to do pavement preservation at a very high-quality level in the Town of Florence. This was a very positive, very well-done project on some roads that really needed some attention, and it just recently got completed, it's very high-quality work.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, and we know that we're moving forward in a positive direction of accountability, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize to ratify a contract with Cactus Transportation, DBA Cactus Assphalts, to provide polymer-modified asphalt paving in an amount not to exceed
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next time, it's coming out of your salary.
I'm glad you think I think.
Hey, I didn't say how many years it was going to take you. I'm just kidding with you, Chris. You did communicate it, and we do appreciate that. All right, so now item F is discussion on expiration of contract for the transfer station services, Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you'll see, this presentation format looks a little familiar. This one is not as long as the previous one.
Mucky for you.
So hopefully that'll be a little bit better. Just by way of background, we discussed at the last council meeting the expiration, upcoming expiration of our contract with Central Arizona Solid Waste, so we were asked to come back and kind of bring some options that are available to the public, and so that's what we've done here tonight. The Town of Florence stopped providing municipal service in 2013. At that time, we signed a contract with George Johnson, who owns Central Arizona Solid Waste. It was a one-year contract, and we had four years for renewal, so if you do the math, we signed in 2013, we renewed in 14, 15, 16, and 17, and that was all of our extensions. And so the contract is expiring, we have no further options to renew. That being said, we do have additional options for our residents to use, so we'll go over those real quick. The first is the easiest, the residents can continue to use that same transfer station, we're just no longer paying the fee that is, that would be charged at that transfer station. The second...
Do you know what the prevailing rate is?
I believe the minimum charge is $42 when you include all the environmental fees, the taxes, everything associated with that.
Okay.
The second option is that residents can use the curbside bulk pickup service through RAD. You'll see in the bottom left, we produced a flyer, made that available at our front counter, we have sent it to Anthem, to Florence Gardens, Caliente, and all of the community associations that we can think of to continue to publicize that. Also, we're including that in this month's utility bill, it's been printed and should be going out into residents here shortly. The important thing, I think, to note here is this is included in our basic rate, our current rate. We're not paying extra to have curbside bulk pickup, just put the stuff out on the curb, and there are 20 cubic yards allowed for that. I just looked at Queen Creek's contract, the Town of Queen Creek also has RAD for their service, they allow six cubic yards.
What is a cubic yard, educate me on this?
If you think of a box that's three feet wide, three feet long, and three feet tall, that's a cubic yard. So if you had 20 of those big boxes...
I can help you with that. Semi-tractor trailer, semi-tractor trailer driving down the road, 72 feet long, that's 20 cubic yards. It's about 10 tons.
Is there a weight limit associated with that by any chance?
I don't know, but typically a roll-off weighs about 10 tons when it's loaded. So in weight, I would equate that to a 10-wheel dump truck that hauls rock and gravel, that holds 10 tons.
I think in practical purposes, the weight limit is two people have to be able to lift it because you have two people there loading the truck. So we don't have a picker or anything, any equipment, it's two people loading the truck. So if two people can lift it, you're good to go. So that's the basic curbside bulk pickup.
Are there exceptions to things that can be put on the curb, be picked up?
Yes, yeah, we have this all posted on our website, so I direct people there. We don't accept hazardous waste as first and foremost as part of that curbside bulk program. As far as individual type items, really anything that's large, we're good, but tree trimmings have to be trimmed down to four feet, they can't be longer than four feet, and then you have to bundle the landscape material. So there are some really intricate details. I'd say let's just direct...
Somebody asked me if they could put a washer dryer out, and I didn't know.
Yeah, washer and dryer are white appliances, we'll get to that in a minute as to where they can take that. A third option is the annual community cleanup day. We typically have these in March, we'll bring a bunch of roll-offs into the park and allow people to put their materials in there, we'll help them load, and so, again, that's completely free to residents. There you go. And that one, we do accept some hazardous materials, and so again, another added value to the residents, you can't currently take hazardous material to the Central Arizona Solid Waste Station, Transfer Station. Fourth, we also have access to the county's free disposal days, those are every quarter, every three months essentially. We have two more left this year on July 14th and on October 13th. The location for that is on Highway 79, past the monastery, so a little bit further out there, but again, they have a Florence zip code, so similarly distanced as to the current transfer station. We have an annual Christmas tree recycling program, if that's part of the concern, people can get rid of their Christmas trees at the drop-off sites in Heritage Park and Anthem. We have a rental truck program where a dump truck or a brush truck is able to be rented, we'll park it in the driveway or the location of the request, and then pick it up on Monday morning and go and dump it for the residents. That's a fee of $95, it typically costs us about $175 to dump it, so again, something that we have chosen to subsidize as a town to ensure that there's access for our community. Here's the discussion on the white appliances, Pinell County Public Works Material Recovery Center on Adamsville Road has option to take those, so we encourage people to take those out to Adamsville Road for their waste out there. Hazardous material, there's a place in Coolidge, over on Story Road, over kind of by the Randolph area, you can get rid of hazardous material at any time throughout the year by going to that site. And finally, I think the one that we've been waiting for, there's Pinell County Transfer Station feasibility study that should wrap up at the end of this month, and coming on the results of that, we anticipate to see that there may be a transfer station located that we could potentially partner with, and look at the option for that. As soon as that study is available, we'll have that option available to us. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Any further questions you may have?
So the one plan, the question that I have is if we're going more towards not contracting out and, you know, utilizing the other services that we have, how are we going to address any, you know, brush or debris that's going to be left in the streets? Because I know that we do have street sweepers, like for example, there's one in the Anthem community that was purchased with the CFD. Haven't seen that come around in quite a while, and I've been chatting with Brent about it. Are we going to have a schedule? How will we address that specific issue? And then as well as in, you know, Florence Proper, Caliente, Florence Gardens, you know, that same issue arises, and I know that we've had residents communicate before about, you know, the garbage in the tree, the brush, yeah, the garbage in the tree, holy Hannah, the garbage in the streets, you know, the debris left behind.
Yeah, may you defer to, Chris, I know on the agenda this morning, or this afternoon, we did have that item to purchase a street sweeper as well, so...
Yes.
I had an answer in mind. As it relates to the schedule of the street sweeper, since approximately 2010, we have a regular schedule in Anthem, but it is not as frequent as it is here. Unfortunately, in the downtown area, we are literally sweeping up our roads as they're falling apart. That's literally what we're pulling up is the chip seal that's falling apart, so we have to spend a lot more time out here in the downtown area than we do in Anthem. In Anthem, we go every two, we complete the cycle every two months, so we can evaluate that and maybe do it monthly if we needed, but that's a schedule that's existed for almost eight, nine years. We haven't had any ongoing issues or any complaints on that, so my thought process, it was running smoothly, and we've kind of kept it along that way, but we can definitely evaluate differently on that there. As it relates to some of the bulk pickup, that's something that Mr. Curtis Williams is monitoring, I would say daily. That's a big part of what he does. I would assume we send out letters multiple times a week on those types of violations, and it helps us, again, keep up and clean up our city. Obviously, we have an employee with over 20 years with us in the room, Dan Cisco, and an employee with maybe a little less tenure, and John Pitts, who's our foreman for the Public Works. And the thing that they keep telling me over and over, and this is again, someone who's been here 20 years, is that this area all the way around has never looked better from the idea of weed abatement, from the idea of just general cleanliness of the town, from the idea of, again, our rideaways. We've made tremendous, tremendous strides, and it's communicated to me very regularly. Again, I can see it, and it's unfortunate, maybe I don't do a better job of communicating this, is the pride that our employees take in the town, the ownership that the employees take in the town, and obviously that energizes me to work around people who are particularly energetic about what they do and proud. So like I said, from our Public Works, I get constant feedback from the Streets Department about, you know, our rideaways and stuff like that, and Curtis deserves a lot of credit for what he does, again, with the code enforcement. As we continue to take baby steps and increase our code enforcement, very proud of the group.
Right, I just, I don't want to lose the momentum that we've gained, because over the years, we have seen a dramatic increase of, you know, our streets being taken care of, and, you know, part of me wants to attribute part of that to residents have a place to drop off. I know in talking with Brent and with Ben, you know, some of the same residents have been utilizing the transfer station, you know, multiple times a month, potentially for, you know, just large quantities of drop-off. I have a concern of, you know, what happens if that ends up in our deserts? You know, how are we going to be able to handle that?
Yeah, I'd like to see us continue using the current transfer station until we get the county transfer station in place.
And again, I would say that...
Well, I don't think they know where that station's gonna go yet, so...
All I know that, I'm saying just keep using the current transfer station until we figure that all out.
So, all right, so question, how much, because I know what our contract was for, and I know we paid out substantially less. Is this something that we can communicate back and say, hey, because we still have, what, $560,000 or $650,000?
Yeah, well more than that.
1.1?
It's about a million dollars that we have enough...
About a million dollars. So what if we did end up going back to say, hey, you know, we wanna talk about rates for one more year while we get this into works?
Yeah, I think the difficulty with this has been that we are out of options on the contract, the contract has expired, and so in order for us to...
It would have to go out for bid.
We'd have to do the RFP process. There are potential other options. RAD runs a facility in Apache Junction.
Yes.
That wouldn't necessarily require us going out to forbid because we have an ongoing contract with RAD, so we could amend that contract to include transfer station services, but again, it lacks the convenience factor of the local site.
But at least for, you know what I mean, it does lack the convenience factor, I'm not going to dispute that at all, but at least it gives somebody a place to dump other than the deserts for now while we're working out that plan, because I know in 2013, we were talking about the transfer station, and I know that we've been making some progress, especially the partnerships with the county. I'd just hate to not have a seamless transition.
And again, another option that I didn't specifically list here, we have had discussions with RAD about adding additional dump days, where, for example, we have the four at the county level, we have the one at the town level. If we, for example, added one, or two, or three at the town level, in addition to really publicizing our bulk pickup, it's potential that we could really kind of even out those scales without, again, having to go out and find an RFP and go through the lengthy process that would be required to go through that procurement process.
Where is RAD dumping now? When they pick up here in town, where do they go to?
RAD has their own site up in...
Yeah, they bring it down to Apache Junction.
Apache Junction?
AJ.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's right off of, if you go down Ironwood and you take a right, go up about two blocks, it's on the left-hand side.
I have a couple of questions.
I too heard it, sorry.
So I was just wondering, first of all, I get questions almost every time there's a holiday on a Monday. I think we really need to clarify on our website when we're doing pickup period, because at least in Anthem residents, it's always all over social media, nobody has a clue. So I think that's the first thing I wanted to bring up.
I answered a question on social media this week about the same thing.
Yeah, it's a mess, so if we can please get that clarified, like, and I think the slide, I think we need to have like the slideshow on that same page, because if we're gonna be taking away, or no longer having this service, I think it's important that we accurately communicate exactly where they can go, what they can drop off, and where. So I think that's something that we need to do. I mean, even if there's an opportunity with the county where they have their free disposal days, where we could possibly partner with them and say, hey, can we have a couple more free disposal days, because that's a relatively close drop-off, and I don't think we'd have to go out to bid for that, would we? Because it's county, right? So that's another option that we could pursue. But, yeah, I think that otherwise, residents are just overly confused with where, when they can drop off, even the recycle, when they have a stove or refrigerator, if they do take it to this drop-off, would they have to pay a fee? Because it's a recycle, would they not have to pay a fee? I think there's so many questions surrounding this, we really need to clearly outline it, especially on our website, because that's where everybody screenshots it, that's where everybody's going, and it's not clear enough right now.
Yeah, I would agree with you, thank you for those comments. We've, up to this point, linked to the county website, and the county website has a lot of this information, but again, it's always difficult when you're mining through multiple pages. So I think, I would concur with you, if we can get it on one location, it'd certainly be helpful.
I have one more question about the street sweeper. When street sweeper was purchased several years ago...
When the street sweeper was purchased several years ago, it was purchased with CFD money from Anthem, and we were told that that street sweeper would stay out there, and I understand it's being used downtown now. Okay, so that one's still out?
We currently have two street sweepers, one's in Anthem, one's in the downtown. The one in the downtown, we're probably gonna mothball when we get the new one.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that? CFD money to purchase a street sweeper?
That's my understanding, is it was bought with a street...
No way, it doesn't allow it, it'd probably impact fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, before all of our time.
And anyway, if it was impact fees, it could be used anywhere.
True.
But not CFD money cannot be used for that.
True.
Okay, looping back on this. I see what you're saying about making it a little bit better understandable, because I think at the last meeting, I quoted that you could only have 25 pounds, and going back and reading it, it references the cubic and this and that, so maybe take your presentation and update the town website section.
Certainly, we can certainly do that.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Appreciate that presentation.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And Brent, Ben, if you could have this on a future agenda, just with what we end up deciding, and that way, we can communicate to the residents. I know the current contract expires on June 30th, so maybe at the next council meeting, we can just have a brief update? Okay. All right, managers report.
Madam Mayor, I only have a few things tonight. First off, I want to invite everyone to participate in the 2018 Summer Reading Program, being referred to as Libraries Rock. There are two parts, there is the child program, there is also an adult summer reading program, begin June 2nd, two days ago, and they go through July 7th. For more information, get with the folks from the library, with Parks and Rec as well. We also have a number of events coming up at the library that are really exciting. I'm gonna go through the ones in June here, just for public information. First, this week, Friday, June 8th, 6:00 PM, in case you've seen the advertisements around downtown, it's Didgeridoo Down Under. Apparently, there's a gentleman that's gonna come in and do an Australia-based presentation, including playing the didgeridoo, so if you like that droning vibratory sound, come on down and check it out. Secondarily, there is a movie at the library on Woody Guthrie, in case you don't know who that is, he was a country folk singer. That's on January, June 9th, at 1:00 PM, once again, at the library. One of the most successful items that we had last year during the summer program is the Home Depot Kids Building Workshop. That will be held Saturday, June 16th, at 9:00 AM at the library. The probably most popular event we had last summer, and it's entertaining, to say the least, is the Florence Library Comic Con, where all the kids and their parents come dressed up in costumes. It's pretty wild, everybody's a superhero. That will be on Saturday, June 23rd, from noon to 4:00. And lastly, trying a new gentleman this year, the Mark Carter Science Day, and that is Saturday, June 30th, at 2:00 PM. Once again, more questions, or if you have more questions, you can contact the library, you can also contact the Florence Parks and Recreation Department. Our planning department asked me to share a message with council tonight, as well as the public. It says, "At Monday's council meeting, can you or the mayor please make an announcement that the city is making changes to town ordinances to allow for small cell wireless antennas and facilities within the town right-of-way? We encourage all residents and interested parties to attend and learn about the new state requirements on how the town proposes to address that." Council and board members wishing to attend, apparently, an upcoming workshop, please get with Lisa. It does not provide a date, Chris, do you know when the date is? No, sorry. Well, I guess we'll get back to you on a date. Sorry, it's been a long day. The last thing that I had is, we just were notified last week, there are a number of these different blog sites and what have you online, but one of them is called 55places.com, and 55places.com ranks active adult communities across the United States, and in 2018, SunCity Anthem was ranked number 66 nationwide in active adult communities, so that's something that we should be proud of. That's all I had for this evening.
All right, thank you. Department reports, are there any questions from council regarding the department reports? Come on, one day, we're gonna come with all the questions, people. Now, that's because they do a really good job of communicating with us outside of it, so, thank you. Call to the public, this is our second call to the public, does anybody want to speak at this time? Closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Anderson.
I've got a couple of things. One, a neighbor asked me about the Pulte handicap parking. They were told that the town required the handicap parking in the parking lot at Parkside, which is out almost to the tennis courts, and when they asked why it wasn't up close, was that they thought under ADA that the handicap parking should be close to the front door. Well, it's not, it's almost to the tennis courts. And when they asked Pulte about that, they said, oh, that's the town's, the town made us do that. I said, I don't think so. Can you bring that up at your Pulte meeting and get that straightened out? Also, I had a question about the downtown striping for the parking on Main Street downtown. It's all but invisible where the parking spaces are, and so, need that looked at. The last thing, sort of a positive thing, attended the Penale Partnership this last week, and the governor spoke to us. He really didn't tell us anything new or exciting. Questions about the water came up, but he sort of glossed over that, but it was interesting, and it was fun hearing the governor speak, he was very positive about the economy and everything that was going on and the growth, but he did point out that we're in the middle of a 25-year drought, and the water's being very carefully looked at. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Galen? Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Wall?
Just want to reiterate my thanks for the chamber's work session this evening, and looking forward to a close relationship working with the chamber.
Councilmember Larson?
Just like to echo what Karen said, and otherwise, I don't have anything tonight.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
I don't have anything tonight.
I have lots tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Now, I want to, thank you, Wendy, thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for coming out. The work session is just the first of many to come, so we, as a council, we're really working hard with our staff and with our chamber, now we want to have economic development, we want positive growth within our community. This evening, we had Jeff Moser retire after 27 years of service to the town in various functions, departments, and roles. Jeff is an asset to the town in regards to, if there's something that needs to be done, he is there, he could do it, he can come up with creative ways to find it. I was really impressed at the showing from your department chief, and again, how it was communicated, that everybody came in on their own time, your off-duty crews in their Class As, and I just think that was a class act, so thank you for showing up and supporting one another. With that, we have another executive session, so I do need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we are adjourning to executive session, we will come out and dismiss when we are finished.